I'll call to order the Board of School Directors meeting for Williston for September 15th, 2014 at 7:10 PM. First item, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, what do you want to call out?
On the consent agenda, I want to pull...
Eight-four, affirm some action by board chair?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll pull eight-four into action.
And, hang on, I have some notes. I think they answered the questions I had about the policies at the CSSU.
So eight-four will become seven dot nine.
Yes, I think that's, that's it.
I had a change too.
Yes.
The FAPAC.
Oh, yes, yes.
Under reports to the board.
So we'll add five dot five and do FAPAC. Okay, any other changes? Great. Audience and communications, do we have any? Hearing none, I'll continue. We have no presentations by design this month and as you saw from the last meeting if you attended, you can see why we've got this little, lots of stuff to talk about. So, five dot O, reports to the board. The principal's report is included in your package. Greg, I thought it was great, I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or do you want to give us a, it's up to you, you don't have to, but if there's anything you want to call out of note?
Just a couple of comments, I realized that when you look at that enrollment table that the numbers don't flush out to zero. Cindy Pavlich prepared those numbers for me and also explained, she's like, I'd have to dig a little bit deeper to get it down to where it all flushes out to zero, but the bottom line is there's a net enrollment change of down 26.
Okay.
So the fact that the ins and outs and the new kinders and the exiting eights don't necessarily jive because there may be double counting of a new family as a new kindergartner or a moving family as an eighth grader.
Okay.
So we didn't quite get it down to make a zero. So if the board was wondering about that, I wanted to let you know we acknowledge that.
I had a...
You're not missing three kids somewhere.
No, there aren't three kids running around. Don't count me.
So I had a somewhat related question, which was, is there a demographic breakdown by class? Was, let's say, ABS hit harder than WCS?
Any grade bubbles?
Was this spread out amongst the classes? Any sense of...
I didn't do that analysis, but I can.
Okay.
I thought something in Elaine's, in her report said that ABS and one other school were the only ones that went up, I think, for this year, right?
Overall, ABS did not go up.
Oh, so I was puzzled by that unless it must be the, I wondered if it was the preschool making it go up. I was curious about that. It was in the, I think it was in her...
I believe our net number for ABS is also down.
I saw that.
I can, if it's the board's will, I can check on grade level comparisons.
I think that, yeah, for me anyway, I don't know what you guys think, I think it would be good to know because coming into budgeting, if we have any grades that are significantly above the others, it starts discussions. That's all.
And was this consistent with our projections? I mean, I guess we won't know unless we look at grade level of where we thought we might be, I guess. Did we have any surprises of changes?
I think it's, I think it's pretty close.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we thought we'd be a little more steady, but I don't recall, honestly.
Mm-hmm.
Greg?
Yeah, I just, I thought the library media program changes were really exciting, what were mapped out in here.
Yeah, this is...
Yes, both, both of these programs that I highlighted, Ellen Arakanos and Leah Jolie are really excited about putting a new spin and focus on these.
We probably don't have to talk about it here, but maybe in the facilities subcommittee, the last item on the program focus for the media, I was talking about collaborating with MC Baker and looking up, taking a look at how they can reconfigure that space.
Yes.
Definitely make sure if that applies, we, you know, we approach and discuss that correctly.
Yep, and at the, the facilities committee meeting that happened last night, the architect asked specifically about programming and educational implications, and I actually called out the library specifically as one area that we want him, them to look at.
Okay.
This, the list, the facilities ONM projects list is not a formal part of my report. It's in response to requests from the board at the last meeting in the summer, and this gets at much more detail than the last list that was presented and categorizes the projects by, you know, completed or pending or not yet requested. And it was actually, it was a great exercise for me and Lyle and Peggy, the bookkeeper, to go through and really look at in the last fiscal year, what are the big things that got done and as we kept, I kept having to expand the table, some really sizable pieces. And then, you know, when you consider, I think it's important to look at this in, in the context of knowing ONM went over last year by a significant amount, but then you see things like the stormwater study and some other large ticket items, the water, you know, the water heater was this fiscal year, but some other large ticket items that were in last year's piece that attribute to some of that overage. I also wanted to inform the board of some systemic and structural pieces that we've put in place in the last couple of months in terms of ONM, and that is a regular meeting between the facilities manager and John Turco, and I attend those regularly as well, not necessarily everyone. And then we instituted an ONM FMR. So basically, the week before the regular district FMR, John and Lyle and I and Peggy are going over the ONM books specifically. So we're preparing, we're doing kind of a micro-study of ONM in preparation for our regular FMR, just so we know that we have a tight handle on operations and maintenance as we move through the year. And our first one was really productive.
Good.
That's great. To the extent it's not, I mean, I think this was really helpful, and I would ask that to the extent there are continuing developments either above or below budget, that we be informed of material changes as they, as they develop.
My one question on this chart was the estimated cost and the actual cost in many cases were identical, and I didn't know if it was, we didn't know the estimate at the ti, I didn't, I was curious about that.
So in many cases, the, there was a, there was a quote provided or a bid went out and the contractor came in finishing the project to, you know, and in some cases that was not the case.
Okay.
As was the case with the water heater and, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, this is very helpful, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Moving on, five dot two, the CSSU debrief. I think we were all present, so unless anybody has anything specifically want to call out or any questions, we can move forward. Five dot three, fourth quarter financial management report. We have this great executive summary now, which is very helpful. Bob, since we're lucky to have you here, is there anything in particular you want to draw our attention to or...
Well, a little tongue-in-cheek, when Walter left you, he was forecasting $29,000 in the hole and grace of grief, you know, based on Greg's outstanding contribution. Or your $40,000 to the good, but do take into account that Greg didn't get here and Walter was gone. So please, please withdraw the kudos, go on to Walter. But, you know, things, things finished nicely. Some of the conservative, like for example in the ONM, we were, we wanted to make sure that we were on the right side of the number when it finished, and so we finished a little better than the doom and gloom we painted earlier, but it's a nice setting to heading into your budget season to have some fun balance with which to play with as you look at crafting a budget next year. So I'll answer any questions you might have on the details.
So, I did my little exercise just because I was looking at the chart that is the pre-audit financial management report for the 12 expenditures chart.
Yep, got it, I'm on that page.
So, I didn't know if it would be appropriate to add in a subtotal below, right before you get to special ed of everything there, of seeing the, you know, what those expenditures are before you get to special ed, since special ed is, you know, sort of something we don't, you know, I don't know, because it's at the CSSU, I mean, we spend the money locally, I guess, but still, because I found it kind of curious, just the wide variation in the houses and I don't, I don't, I don't remember what this money is per se, what these expenses are for each house, but there's a wide variance on how much of whatever they were given for whatever it was, whether it's for supplies or things, you know, and how much they expended of that. And it gets offset by the overage in special ed, you know, if we don't look at it separate, so, because there's 300,000 under before you get to special ed, well, 250,000.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, that is by and large the, the non-staffing costs in each of the class groupings, so all of the, the salary and benefits for professionals and support staff is included up in instructional. So from kindergarten on down to 1127 language is all of the team expenses, so it would by and large be supplies, any professional services, they might have convinced Walter that should be in the budget, but it's, so it's miscellaneous expenditures below staffing. We assume that they're all going to do a diligent job of spending every dime they've got as we end the year, and they uniformly did not.
Yeah.
Which is just not a bad thing.
Yeah.
I mean, if they, if they were distracted and focused on other things and spending money, we're okay with that. I have in my file that Greg and I and Peggy need to spend five or 10 minutes on that topic generally as we go through the year, because if they're not going to spend it, we'd really like to be able to tell you that in March, so you can redeploy some dollars. But it is, it is basically that, the expenses by team underran what we had budgeted.
And I wondered if in years past, if some of that money might have been used for field trips where they didn't get money, enough money to cover field trips for parents that didn't pay in, if they would have covered it from this or if they weren't permitted to, I don't know, because now with the way FAP allot's money for all the regular school field trips throughout the year, they don't, you know, they don't use any of this money for that because they get a separate allocation for that.
Yeah, it's a good question, right?
So, I just, I was just curious.
Karen, the best resource for Greg and I to kind of flush that out would be Peggy, because they, they have to convince Peggy they know what they're doing at the beginning, middle and end of the journey every year. So she'd have a pretty good spin on, on any general conclusions either we or you might be able to draw from what happened.
I see what my kid's house did. They spent almost all their money.
That's like one of my daughters would have done that. Another daughter might not. So we'll, we'll poke at that, particularly as we head into budget season, because there might be something in there that, that informs Greg and the administrative team of something they might want to do differently.
Right.
Okay?
So just a couple of comments, one's directly on point, the other's tangential. Great to see the surplus. I feel like in this next budget session, I really would like to get some focus on our food services deficit that seems to be there year in, year out, and I, maybe one is just having an understanding of why we always have a deficit year in, year out, and if, trying to understand as well as if it's systemic, are we just not adequately budgeting for what is...
I think it merits some focus.
Okay. The two of us will work with Scott and make sure you've got that as part of your package the next month.
And then, the second is, there was a comment with regards to accreding, crediting Walter with our, our surplus, which happy to give him credit for that. And here's the tangent, I think it'd be great for us as a board to do an exit interview with, with Walter at some point. I know that, that takes a little extra time, but I just feel he has a unique perspective, and now that he's not tied to the school district, he might have ideas that we should explore with him, he just may have viewpoints that he may want to share with us that could be helpful strategically as a board.
Let me, let me chat with Elaine, and I'll do it rather quickly, because you do not want to wait, if you really want to pull that off, you don't want to wait too long, because Walter will forget who you were. So let me take that, and I'll check with Elaine on how we might orchestrate something like that, if it's generally the board's interest to talk to Walter.
I think it would be of great benefit.
Okay.
Okay, great. If there's no other comments or questions on the FMR, move forward, Facilities Committee. So I must follow my story and say that I totally missed yesterday's meeting, so I apologize. I might ask Greg to bring us up to date on that, but before you do that, I'll just give you guys the general kind of flow of what's happened over the summer. The facilities subcommittee met on a number of occasions and started off by putting together what, you know, what we, what our goals were, and then spent a really a pretty good amount of time interviewing engineering design and architecture firms to find out who best would fit working with us to go through the school, all of its systems, you know, in the context of what we were thinking of, and give us back a really good report, you know, understanding all of the issues we have in front of us, how much it costs and helping us, and then they will help us prioritize that. And moving forward, they will also help assist us when we start to communicate with the community if we need to, and I'm sure we will need to. And so the result of that was choosing an engineering firm, it was TruX, TruX Collins, and I know that they've started their work, and Greg, I'll just pass it over to you if there's anything more out of last night that's worth mentioning.
Sure. Bob, jump in if I miss anything, but it was a productive meeting last night where we had the TruX Collins lead, David Epstein, facilitate the meeting, and the purpose of last night's meeting was to, was it last night? Yes. Was to essentially kick the process off.
Good.
And establish a rough timeline for the process, and we came up with some tentative dates for public and staff input. Board, we're going to be looking, likely be talking with Kevin and Elaine about agenda time for the October board meeting, as well as the November board meeting, for updates from the, the architecture firm in the context of the facilities committee. And then we've sketched in some community forums as well, taking into account the schedule of when board meetings are happening and when board, when you would need materials for board meetings, and kind of going through the December months. But it was just a productive meeting around the organization, phases of the project, timeline.
Great.
Want to add anything to that, Bob?
Yeah, the, the meeting last night included the entire team, so for feasibility or a, a building or school assessment to be performed, you need not just only an architect, but you need a couple of professionals in the engineering field, a civil engineer, a mechanical and electrical engineer, to do the, the level of depth analysis you needed of those systems. And the four of them have to work together, so it's important that at this first meeting, everybody's hearing the same general understanding of expectations and timeline. Kevin, the, the meeting occurred probably half an hour after I read your musings on a timeline email, and for the rest of you, it was kind of Kevin in the heat of understanding what's about to happen with consolidated, consolidation conversation, how does that in fact impact your work on the need to invest a sizable sum of money in the building? How Greg and I left them last night was, the board expects you to be marching to a timeline we've talked about earlier that says you need to be ready for, with the analysis early enough that if you as a board want to do something in the March timeframe with a voted article, they've, they've enabled you to do that. But I also raised the question that at the same time, the boards are getting ready for a March possible vote on consolidation. It may very well be that you elect to do both, it may very well be you elect to table one, and the only one that is table-able at the moment would be the, the bond. So I said, I said to the group, just be ready, it's a complex environment we're heading into, but our expectation, Greg's and mine and yours as part of the committee, was that they, they do it quickly enough that you'll be able to have that option when you get to January. Does that make sense?
It does, if I just may, you know, I probably have just enough information to be dangerous in the sense of, I sat on the strategic committee this summer.
Yes.
And I, I would, certainly my takeaway that to have a March vote on consolidation is very difficult to foresee, not that we can't do it before June 30th, but the fact to be able to ramp it up by town meeting day seems very unlikely, for what that's worth.
Okay. Stay tuned.
Good, thank you. Five dot five, FAPAC report.
So the FAPAC had their first meeting of the year last week, and a lot of it was about firming up calendar, making, seeing if there are enough reps for some of the houses. One of the things that's new on the calendar is a WSD technology time for parents that Bonnie Birdsall is going to host on October 7th, to really give parents an opportunity to learn about the Chromebooks and all the Google, you know, processes that kids do in the classroom, so it's sort of anticipated to be a hands-on type of event that FAP is sponsoring with Bonnie.
Great.
So, so that's something that you'll see more of in the school bell and things like that. The learning expos are going on, and that's another piece that I know Kevin, I think, helped out with, one of them last week, this is tied in with curriculum nights, and we have two this week.
I think one was tonight, actually.
No, it's tomorrow and, tomorrow and Thursday. Tomorrow night is the Allenbrook School.
She's doing really good on dates this week.
So tomorrow night is Allenbrook School and Thursday is the other one at W...
Five eight.
Right, five through eight, and Kevin had indicated, I think, that he could help with that one, because he was going to be there anyway. I could also help with that one, but I can't help tomorrow night, so. And basically, what it is for the school board is there are all these trifolds on tables that are set up after parents have met with their respective house teachers, they come to a, I don't know where they do it at Allenbrook, but they would come to, you know, a common place, and they basically go around to guidance and other, you know, library and all the different school programs and learn a little bit about them. And so in the past, I think the school board, you know, I think this is our second or third year of doing these, and the school board just has one and people won't have any questions. I think you stepped in.
Yeah, yeah.
This is curriculum night for tomorrow night?
Right, at Allenbrook.
At Allenbrook, I'm going to Central School, sorry.
Oh, right, because Ari's...
Yeah, and Amy.
Oh, but no, theirs would be Thursday night.
Oh, no, then I have to work late tomorrow in order to be able to go, so...
What time is the ABS expo tomorrow?
I believe it's 6:30 to 8:00.
So 6:30 is when the parents arrive to go to the classrooms, so if you got there by 7:00, I think, to set up.
Yeah, really, yeah, and it's, and really, teachers are going to take close to an hour in their classrooms and parents. So it's really like 7:20 to...
Yeah, just to set up, and I don't know what school board has set up in the past.
We don't really do much, honestly, we, we just, we're just there to answer questions.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be there Monday.
Okay.
I'll let Shani know.
Do you need coverage for Central School?
So if, if Kevin isn't there, I can just stand there afterwards, because I don't need to go around to Alda.
Great.
So, but I'll see you there too, anyway. Just a, a couple of other things that we talked about at the FAP meeting is looking at the educational grants that FAP issues, that they decided to double the money for this year, and some of the conversation, and this is educational grants to the classrooms for teachers and other professionals in the school, and I think one thing Greg brought up was can we look at a second wave of these later in the school year, different midpoint of the year, or do we do, another thought was a rolling process of some sort. So that's something that is going to be looked at, is what we might be able to do. And then I briefed on, a little bit on high level on consolidation, Greg covered the facilities, saying these are things that Kevin had indicated to brief to FAP, and then I asked about Budget Buddies. I sort of gave an early sort of about what, how I really enjoyed being Budget Buddy, and I also reached out to Michael, who was a Budget Buddy last year, and, actually, that's later, we can talk about that.
Okay, very good.
And then we began at the end of the FAP meeting, a little process of discussion of Level III field trips, which I noticed was on our work plan, so, and I don't know what it's on the work plan for as far as the board discussions, but Greg had already, we weren't there at that point in the meeting, so, but just talking about, I don't know, you know, FAP funds a little bit of these Level III overnight field trips at the end of the year. There were some changes made last year, we, I have no idea, because I don't have an eighth grader, what the impact is for this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than there's some fundraising going on already for one of the houses, so.
Okay.
So I don't know what the board's involvement on Level III field trips is, but...
Well, we approve them, but it gets, it's always gotten a little tough, because we're sort of at the end of the process, but we have an expectation, so maybe we should have a, a conversation with Greg, make sure that we're all in the same place, so we're not stepping into the end doing something that messes everything up, because it's my first priority, and second priority is just making sure that kind of we understand.
Right.
Some of what's happened in the past few years and why, and, you know, because we want to provide a good educational opportunity, but there's been some disparity among the houses because of...
Right, and there still is, I think, and that was some of what we were talking about, the equity, yeah.
And just about around that, there's, there will be a field trip on the agenda for next month's, for approval, a Level III trip.
Hmm.
And Jackie and I have already spent some time doing some analysis meeting with some teams, looking at the Level III trips and in a lens of sustainability.
Good, okay.
And then I just...
And I think we are thinking to more.
And then I just wanted to share the annual fund brochure that parents are starting to receive.
Oh, good.
Which, again, that, you know, the annual fund largely pays for all the field trips throughout the rest of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So we could just share that with you all, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And just for financial, just, you know, because in the scope of our budget, FAP has a budget of $52,600 for the year for whatever we, you know, for our list of expenditures, and that is last year's fundraising that we spend this year, that the organization spends this year, I should say. So, you know, just, you know, I don't know, it just seems, it's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
So, and again, more than half of it is money that goes for the field trips to all the houses, so.
Yep. Great, heck of a start to the year. That's excellent. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to discussion matters, six dot O. So six dot one, policy, so these are policies that are up for discussion, I guess, for feedback from us back to our committee rep who, is that Giovanna or is that, or is it Kevin?
Kevin has been going to policy, I think.
All right, so if you have any feedback, I guess my suggestion is you bring it up here or you can email me and/or Kevin, or copy me or email, get it to Kevin.
Yeah, the edits seem pretty minor.
These seemed pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I agree, I don't, I don't have any, any input this, this month. Okay, six dot two, I actually was going to pull this because we're going to, it's, we have it in action, so we'll be discussing it then also, but the merger committee, do we want to, do we want to wait for this until we bring it up in action?
Yeah, let's wait.
Just because it's going to be a discussion.
Yes.
Six dot three, Budget Buddies, so I'm, it's, I'm very thankful that you brought it up at the FAP.
So I brought it up, but FAP did a little, I think, did a little sales pitch, right, Greg?
Yeah.
Dog and pony shit.
Not really, but, and then I actually emailed Michael Wayman, who was a Budget Buddy last year, because he was very involved in the budget process with us last year, and I also, I had emailed him to see if he wanted to help on FAP too, but his kids aren't in, they're at a different, they're at Bellwethering School, but he does want to be a Budget Buddy, he's interested in us, so to keep him informed on the timeframe, so.
Great, okay.
And there's a woman who's done it for the last two years, she's from Burlington, originally, I think was actually a school board member there, can't remember her name.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about, and...
She seems to...
Well, we've got, we've got our records, we can reach out to our past Budget Buddies. We can reach out to our past Budget Buddies and, you know, the other thing, the other thing we do is kind of all reach out ourselves to try and, try and pull in at least one person that we're, that we know of.
Yeah.
The more we get, the better.
Right.
You know, I think we had a couple extra last year.
We had like seven, I think, last year.
It was really helpful, I thought, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're familiar with our process or not.
A little bit.
Yeah, so we, so we invite community members to come sit at every, at every budget meeting and, you know, give us that, that objective eye that we don't have and really go through the process from top to bottom and, yeah, we found it very helpful. So it's, you know, they don't have, you know, a vote beyond their vote at town meeting day, but they certainly get a lot of input and it's much appreciated.
And it's been a source of recruiting for the board as well.
Yeah.
So it's a good succession planning.
It's great that you had so many, that you had seven.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, so, you know, because if you, because we're coming into October, next, you know, next meeting, so really we need to identify them by, you know, at our next meeting because we'll be pushing in the first budget session.
Right.
So everybody get out there and.
Put your seatbelts on.
Yep. Go recruiting. Six dot four, Communications Board's Corner, next article submission. I think we've got a, one right here.
Budget Buddies.
Budget Buddies, yeah. Anyone want to volunteer to write it up or?
Well, maybe since we should volunteer to Jivana or Kevin in light of their absence. I, I, what goes around comes around, so I won't do that.
Yeah, I actually haven't written an article in a while, so I'll, I'll step up. This is an easy one to do. So I'll grab this one and I'll get it in either for Tuesday or the following, whenever, I think the deadline is Monday or Tuesday. Monday now? Yeah, okay. I'll get it on Monday.
And you might want to give it to Cindy at the same time for the school bell.
Ah, like that. Thank you. Okay. That gets us into seven dot O, Action Matters. Can I have, seven dot one, can I have a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen, sixteen board work plan?
Sure moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. It was included in your packet. There's a little bit of, I think, some minor discrepancies around meeting dates around budget, although I don't know if it, if it's here in our local one. I know there was at CSSU. There is a budget calendar that we will approve and that will be the official, you know, meeting times that we will, that we will use. This is really a higher level, the work plan. We, what, what Elaine did and the COF did is they put it on here so you could kind of see where it fell with the other work. You can get a, kind of get a feel for all the things going on. So that's why, that's why you see it that way.
So under the, where I saw the Level Three field trips was here under October 20th meeting for actions, I think.
Well, so it's for actions, so that's what, that, that kind of jives with what Greg's saying. So if it's under actions, it's, you know, it's not, it's, it's.
It's not really a discussion.
It's not really a discussion. It's, we're going to have one to look at and approve.
Okay.
Okay? If, if we want to have a discussion about it, we need to take a look at this work plan. This would be really the right time to see if there's any place to fit it in, in context because the tough part about it is any discussion we have really isn't going to affect.
This year.
This year. We need to be very clear about that, so. So I'm not sure if there's a need at the board level, quite honestly, at this point.
Okay.
Okay?
So, but, but I feel like almost every year we get a last minute appropriation request. So wouldn't it make sense to, I mean, I don't, we've got so much going on, I, I can see why we wouldn't want to cram it.
Well, I think, you know, the timing of the requests, they have to have it in by a certain date and they're, and they, they usually, they meet that. We've had years where we have rejected one and it's put a crunch on that. They've had to come back to us with an, with an alternate plan. That's only happened once in my memory, just so you know. But I guess from a board perspective, you know, we don't want to, it's not our job to do the work of administration, we know that, but I guess it's a, there, there is a board policy around Level Three field trips. So if we need to approach any changes in that policy, that's what we should look at.
Okay.
Okay?
Where do you find that policy?
Uh, it's up on the website, but I will take a note and I'll send a note.
Is it the Harbor House that's coming next?
Mm-hmm. Good for them. I mean, you know, somebody's got to go first. Let's read field trip policy. So, I guess the way I would like to handle it is, is that, in my opinion, it's not worth trying to, I'm not sure where it would make sense to put it in here anyway. Let's do some homework, review the policy. If we have any questions, get them to me and I'll talk to Greg. And then if there's something that we feel we need to talk about, we'll slot it in, in reference to next school year. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Okay. So otherwise, any other discussion on this, anything, I mean, this, we started working on this back in, in June at our retreat and it's, you know, been, it's been pulled together, you know, in reference to the resources that are going to come talk to us, you know, all that CSSU and that local level, so. Any other questions? Okay, hearing no more questions. All in favor of approving the work plan?
Aye.
Any, any dissent? Greg, motion passes? All right. Seven dot two, approve the budget assumptions. So this was, this is in your packet also. Can I have a motion to approve the budget assumptions as presented to you in your packet?
Sure moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So I guess I, following up on the CSSU one, I had the same question about these five percent increases in different places, and I know Bob addressed it a little bit. You know, the fuel oil, the diesel and everything, because I think this is my third year of being part of the budget process and seeing that same percentage every year.
Although what's interesting, I, I noted at least that it's five percent off of last year's expenditures, so there is kind of a.
Last year's actual, yeah.
So there, there is an adjustment process that takes into account recent market fluctuations.
Yeah, so it isn't like a steady line and it's increasing five percent.
Right, every year, okay.
Yeah.
That's a good point, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so in that context, like, I think it's, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
And, you know, depending upon how tight our budget is, we can go back and relook at those if need be.
Yeah. I mean, this, yeah, right, this, this, this informs our baseline, so when we get our baseline, it's going to be assuming, assuming these increases.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the budget assumptions?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the budget calendar, this also was in your packet, was. So can I have a motion to approve the budget calendar as delivered in your package?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You have a second, Josh?
Sure.
Discussion. So.
So when I looked at it, it didn't look like we, as a Williston community, have a Williston budget meeting until December 7th. Is that the right way to look at this?
Hmm, I was never seeing the same thing.
So we had nothing in November.
Well, in November, we, if, if, the only thing we have is to approve precious services. You're right. And then, wow, wait a minute, really? Where's October here?
So there's that one page or two.
Oh, that's different because they don't, they don't have a meeting here, so they're going to do that. Yeah, the reason why is that we're not having a separate meeting around special education. So it takes, I think it takes one out of our schedule. Is that correct, Sandy?
Yeah.
But we often have at least one, you know, we have them in November. I mean, it's, so it's not just, you know, getting the decision packets, there's an educational process that goes on, especially with the Budget Buddies where, I mean, I, I vividly remember two meetings at least where.
We had two meetings before Thanksgiving with the first year I did this, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, where we're just going through.
And we have, we have 21st in December and we have 7th in December.
And one made, well, they're all public meetings.
Basically helps, a couple pages later in the packet is a list view of the meetings.
Yeah.
That is, I found it a little easier to look at.
Ah, yes. That's Richard Shobin, Williston. So we're getting the same number of meetings as everyone else, we're just, October 20th, well, it's the October 20th, isn't, is October 20th not on the October calendar?
October 20th is our next board meeting, I think.
Yes.
So it, so it corresponds. Okay. Oh yeah, it's a carousel.
Yeah.
And so is November. And then we see our baseline on December 7th. Then we do decision packets on the 21st, final approval on the 11th, so it's.
So I guess we could, you know, depending on the process, we could have our public forums in early November.
Yeah.
Yeah, it fits to do that in early November.
I'd be, I'd be curious what last year's process was and to compare and contrast. I, I, I think there's something missing.
Do you want to, here's my suggestion, why don't we just table this motion until Bob's able to come back in the room? We can ask him because he may be able to give us some recollection.
Sure.
So.
I'm just wondering if I can pull.
We had one less meeting last year compared to the year before. I know that also.
I think due to the special education.
Yeah, I think it's due to special education. I really do.
Right. But we definitely, I think, had something in November last year. And I think the, the community forums were, I want to say they were in October.
See, I want to, I, I think that, I think the community forum's not on here as.
Throwing it off.
Is throwing it off. I just, that's, that's my recollection.
And isn't one of the community forums is with the teachers? Is that what it is? There's one that you, that was done with staff?
Yeah, traditionally, we do, we do it, we try and do a staff, community, a staff forum and then a public forum.
Public forum.
But there is an educational process with the Budget Buddies. We just don't launch in, with them in December to talk about decision packets. There's at least one meeting, if not two.
Well, that's December 8th, that's going to be baseline budget.
Right.
That's going to be, that's where we kick off and do all the.
And then the decision packets is the second one.
Yes, decision packets is on 22nd.
21st for us.
Sorry, 20.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It just doesn't.
It goes quick. Yeah.
I, I still think we should take a look at what we've done historically and.
So last year you did have a budget meeting on Thursday, the 20th of November? And then you jumped into December.
We didn't have anything prior to that.
The forum was before that.
Okay.
But not an actual meeting.
And did we have two in December or just one?
Ooh, I was.
I think we just had one.
And we had, it was shortly after.
December 4th and, yeah, just one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're squeezing.
It was shorter last year, so.
Okay.
And maybe that makes sense given all the other stuff we got to do.
Yeah, kind of not complaining. I'd rather just go ahead. Okay?
Yep.
So we'll keep it on the table? Any other questions or discussion?
With the noted scheduling of a public hearing.
Yep. Yep, which, which, which we have to do on our October 20th meeting. We're going to schedule that meeting, at that meeting.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you, Sandy.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay. So with that, all in favor of approving the budget calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Seven dot four, appoint one member to the healthcare committee. I.
What is that?
Yeah. Hold on here.
That was in.
Because single payer didn't emerge, so there shouldn't be a collective bargaining issue.
Well, do we have?
So in here, it says, as a reminder, the CSSU board established a healthcare reform study committee at its June meeting. Local boards are asked to appoint a representative to the committee at their September meetings. Board chairs have information about the VEHI information session all committee members will attend in October. We are in the process of identifying employee representatives to join the committee as well. I don't know what that is, so, what that means.
Yeah, we, we discussed it at the retreat and we've decided to create this committee, I believe.
Is it still necessary?
I don't know. Did it come up at the CSSU meeting?
No.
It did, I was going to say, at that meeting, yes, on Monday, Elaine said that on down the pipe will be, there will, there will be likely changes in the healthcare system around the state, but there was still an need, they, they should have announced a lead group that they were looking for representatives, basically that, that same.
That same thing, yeah.
But, but the fact that it was on the lead agenda is relevant.
I think that there's a training that Cindy came in and may have emailed about, because the, of the requirement for 2017 with healthcare and the committee is going to somehow research or determine how that affects CSSU as a whole.
Is this the Cadillac Plan issue? Okay.
So I think they want representatives from each district. Can't find that email.
I'll do it. I got to think that this is all one meeting.
All right.
Maybe two. A little cynical, but.
So did you just sign up? Oh, I thought you said you said, I thought you just said, I'll do it, but maybe I misheard you.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Unless you want to, I.
I, I honestly, I don't want to, I don't want to take this one. Karen, can I have a motion for you to appoint Josh as our member to the healthcare committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Josh to our healthcare.
Josh, can you second yourself?
I guess, I guess.
I guess, yeah, why not? You vote for myself, right? So yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Actually, a little further discussion.
Okay.
That, could we appoint him until we have a full complement of our members and if it turns out to be more than one meeting, we revisit, maybe one of our other two members might, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I, I, as long as this doesn't turn into every other week, I'll be, I'll be okay.
Okay.
We can take action to, to, to switch it out.
I know Cindy doesn't have time for that either, so I don't think that's the intent.
I think this will be hiring a consultant, getting a report and making a decision, be my guess.
Okay, so then, I'll listen favor.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll add my aye. The motion passes. Okay, we get to the good one. Can I have a motion to appoint four members to, hmm. Can I have a motion to, to appoint two board members and two other members from the community to the merger committee?
I'll make that motion to point, to, so four Williston residents to the merger.
Two Williston School District Board members?
Correct.
Okay.
And two other Williston residents.
Other Williston residents.
To the merger, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion. So, uh, if you had a chance to read the email I forwarded on this week, um, it turns out, and we heard this at CSSU, but I just wanna make sure we're all thinking the same thing here. It turns out that we, that that committee, uh, is represented, um, by ADM, you know, by the amount of students that we put into the system and that, that, that allot's us four representatives. That committee will, um, you've seen the charge. So that committee has responsibility, basically, to evaluate whether a merger is the best, the best route forward for the CSSU to take and, uh, provide a recommendation. But as we learned tonight, that committee gives that recommendation to the state and if the state approves it, if the recommendation is to move forward and the state approves our plan, it goes straight to the voters. So that's the context, so.
Raises very interesting governance questions.
It does. It does.
I mean, I still think we should, we should, you know, we need to have representation on this committee. And I think we have to amend this motion at some point to identify the four that we wanna appoint, presume.
Yeah, I, I do, because, yes, I do.
I, I think it really creates some very serious, I don't wanna say serious, but significant, um, transparency issues. Because what you're gonna have happen is a committee that's not comprising a board so that you have open meetings necessarily, you should, they probably should, but they don't have to be warned as open meetings.
Well, I don't know, didn't we just hear in, from open meeting that they do actually have to be warned? Oh, but this is a really interesting case, because they're not bringing their recommendation back to the board.
Right. And so, in some ways, we are delega, by statute, we're delegating authority for them to make the recommendation.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess, you know, I, I, my hope is that whatever process this committee adopts, that there be some process by which they are consulting regularly, at least the local boards, what's going on and seeking input from time to time.
Yeah.
I, I think they run the risk that if they don't.
If they don't, then they won't get consensus, yeah.
Well, they.
Well, they won't go vote.
Well, they could get a vote and they could find board members speaking out against the vote because they didn't come back and, and get input.
And get input.
Right, you think you would want uniform board support of this.
Or as much as possible.
Right.
So, for, shall we discuss membership? Or is there anything else we should, I mean, it's, it kind of is what it is. So, um, in, in the email, uh, was approached by Jean Jensen and, uh, she indicated also that Jean McQ, who is, serves on the C V U board and is a Williston resident, is also interested in serving. And Paulie Malik would be, uh, interested in serving in an alternate, as an alternate, if we need one. I'm not sure how that works, there's, but that's, just so you know, that that, that there is that interest there. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, and then that leaves membership, you know, from this board.
So my concern with that makeup, and I think they're all great folks and may, would make great committee members. But if we're thinking that it would be good to have someone from the greater community and someone who has some familiarity with the school process, it's still a very, um, we're not, we're making a choice not to really go outside of our school board members. I mean, ye- yes, we are not, the, the other two are essentially C V U board members.
That's true.
So there is not a greater community, um, member on the school, on this committee.
But it's part, but it's part of the charge of the committee, um, to do any kind of communication with the larger body of our towns, um, before the recommendation is made. So therefore, that would be where you'd involve the community, I mean, I'm not sure. Or, you know, or, or, because are these merger committees designed to be ma- made up of just board members?
I, I think the strategic committee talked about the idea that it would be beneficial if you were to go outside of school board members, that you have someone who has some historic familiarity with how schools operate. Otherwise, you're creating a learning curve that's pretty steep and might impact the functionality of the, the committee.
Especially because of the expedited timeframe of coming up with some sort of recommendation.
Yeah, we're sort of against the wall in that we, I think we need to appoint this evening.
And, and given, you know, historically, how we don't get a lot of people.
Let me just throw out an idea for discussion purposes.
Sure.
Someone like a Ted Kenny, who's a former school board member, sits on our select board, may have a broader sense of the community's, proclivities towards merger and might have a viewpoint that would be beneficial to have on the committee. I haven't talked to Ted, so I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know if he's even interested, but I just, um, just gives a broader diversity to the, to the discussion.
In principle, I don't have a problem with it, in execution, I think we're a little stuck.
Is there anything that, I don't, prevents the committee from bringing in other people to talk to about this? I mean, as the committee is, let's say there's a merger committee.
They can talk, yeah, they can bring anybody in, but there's, there's a matter of who's a voting and non-voting member on the committee.
Right, right, right.
So we're appoint, we're appoint, we're appointing voting members to the committee.
Right, but I'm saying, some, you know, bring in someone to lend their opinion, you know, if you decide you wanna have each town brings a few community members, I don't know, I, I'm just brainstorming.
I, I think that the tough part of this is that, once we appoint, that's what, that committee has to figure out. We, we have to trust that the people we send there are going to think, think in that manner and execute well. Yeah. Yeah. So given all of that, we need two representatives from this board for sure, so why don't we knock that out right now?
So who, I mean, you had asked if who was interested, how many of?
So, so you expressed interest, Karen expressed interest. Um, I haven't gotten any other specific expression of interest except for maybe an eyebrow raised in a meeting this evening. So, if anyone else is interested, I'd, I'd certainly like to hear it now.
I'm happy to defer, I think the chair of our board would make a great member on this committee.
Alright. Fine, uh, I, I, I will serve.
Okay, so now we got two.
Now we got two, so, so, we have, so, we have C V U board members who have expressed an interest.
I think Jean would be an important person, especially given that she's chair of the C V U board.
I, I would agree.
Well, she's chair of CSSU.
I'm sorry, CSSU.
Yeah, so her input, I think is.
Chairman of C V U.
Yep. Yep. Okay. So that leaves us one position to discuss. So we have interest from Jean McQ and we have, uh, in- interest in a, in an alternate capacity from Paulie Malik. If, you know, if you can logistically think of a way to bring another candidate forward at this point, I'm, I'm all ears.
I, I have no objection to nominating Jean and him, while he being the backup.
Okay.
Because there was some indication that Jean Jensen wasn't sure Jean McQ would be able to make the time.
Yeah, although I pulled him aside tonight and I, and I, actually I did ask him and he said that he, he feels like this is pretty important, he's gonna try his best to, to be there. So, you know. But I think it's good to, to nominate an alternate in case, you know, any one of those four find, or any one of those two, anyway. Find, you know, find that. They have exciting circumstances.
Okay.
Okay, so can I have a amendment to the motion?
I hereby amend that the motion read that the appointment include specifically the four people.
So, so Kevin Mara and Karen Mackled from the board. Jean Jensen.
And Jean.
And Jean McQ as our appointed representatives from the community.
And that they report back to this board on a regular basis. On the ongoings of their, their committee work. Or at least one of them.
I, I, I'm okay with that, but it's.
Oh, actually, you're gonna be able to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah.
Forget that.
So, yeah, you're gonna get it, we'll, we'll, we will add it to our agenda as a board, as a, as a report to the board.
Yeah.
Okay? So, let's keep it, keep it clean.
Yep.
Great? So Sandy, have you got that? Good with it, oh, and, uh, and to appoint Paulie Malik as an alternate in the event that the, any, any one of the two committee members can no longer fulfill their responsibilities. Any other discussion? Barring none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you for getting through that with me, that was, took a little thinking through, much appreciated.
I found the email from Cindy regarding your last item. And it says that the committee, the health committee, would meet three times, once before October eighth, one mandatory meeting at the V High Forum on October eighth, and then one post-Forum. So are you available October eighth?
I probably am, but probably not before the eighth.
Okay, so the mandatory one was October eighth, at the V High South Burlington office.
Do you know what time?
I do not, those typically start at six.
Oh, and you think that should be, that's, great.
Okay.
Just give me a one quick second.
I emailed that to you, to you.
No.
Yeah, I'll be able to ask that one.
We're setting our public forum tonight.
That's, that's what's on the calendar and that's what we're expected to do in the next action item.
Okay, so let's update.
So, let's make this a little bit cleaner, let's, let's just have a discussion, then we'll have the motion pass it here, so we can figure out a date. Okay, so let's look at the calendar here, um, does anybody have any suggestions as to when we should set the public forum date? Greg, it's actually, has some impact with you, because we do try and do a, we try and do one day where after school, we invite input from staff and then we roll that in, we take a short break and roll that into like a six P M public meeting.
Same day.
We try to, yeah, just to make it easy on everybody, but.
And you usually do it in the dining room?
We usually do it in the dining room.
Well, assuming we, we wanna do this in November, could, do we have to make the decision today to give Greg the opportunity to?
I, I don't, honestly, if we can do it in November and it looks like we have no reason we can't, um, I, I would really say we just table it for the next meeting and give, give us all some time to figure out the best date.
Well, depend, but how, how many, how much notice would we have to give?
Cause we're into October.
Do we have to do two weeks or just a couple days or? So, uh, I know that the week of November ninth, if we're looking at November, that the dining room is not available. That's the week of the Scholastic Book Fair, so just as, um, and I think one of those nights, there's a, um, the guidance staff is having a speaker come in that week, so, that Tuesday, I think.
The dining room at Central.
At Central School.
We could always have it at A B S if need be.
Right.
Or in the auditorium, yeah.
The week of, on November fifth, last night, we sketched in a facilities committee meeting. So that wouldn't mean you couldn't have a forum, but just.
We could, well, we, we can't do the seventeenth, that's a board meeting, um.
Why not?
Cause that's our board meeting, we'll be here. So we, so we, we could do it.
We could invite people to come, no, we need to have the Williston.
No, 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 we need to do it, yeah, uh, we need to do it in Williston. So if there's any other day on the week of the sixteenth, that, that would probably be the best way, best day to do it, that Wednesday or Thursday, probably.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town starting Thursday.
What about the twelfth in an alternate location?
Well, yeah, we could do it in the cafeteria and then.
It could be that this book fair actually pulls in some more customers.
Actually, it's a really, it's a great thing.
That's a great idea.
Shall we, uh, shall we make it work for the twelfth, Greg? I think.
Starting at four.
Just check on the availability.
It's really, for the teachers, you, you really wanna do it pretty close to right.
Three fifteen, three thirty.
Three fifteen. In the past, the whole board hasn't been able to make that, you know, and we either split the duties between the two meetings or how many people was to make.
So.
Public hearing, uh, budget. Right, cause the flip side is, and maybe you just have a separate meeting with the teachers, because if you really wanna get the public in, and let's assume most people are working, three thirty is not viable.
No, no, no.
No, there was always a sep-.
There's always two teams, yeah.
So last year you had it on Monday, November tenth, seven fifteen at Allenbrook, seven fifteen A M, three P M Williston and five thirty for community.
Oh, that's right, I went in the morning for Allenbrook, the teachers came in then, yeah, we split the duties up, cause I did Allenbrook last year, I remember. So we can do that too. So, I, I'm absolutely fine with splitting it up into three.
Yep.
Cause I, cause their input's important.
Yeah, I'm up in Allenbrook, I think, I would change that.
Monday, if we found that pattern.
The twel-.
Monday, the ninth, is a lead meeting day, but I don't see a reason why. John and I couldn't go to the forum before going to lead, lead usually starts around eight.
We always bring coffee and bagels.
Alright.
But didn't we wanna do it on the twelfth so that we had the benefit of this, um.
Well, this would be the morning meeting, which.
Specifically, specifically for Allenbrook.
Oh, I see.
They'll leave the twelfth alone for W C S.
Yep, and then do the evening congruent with the book fair.
So, that same evening of the twelfth later for, for.
For the public community, yeah.
What time would that be?
What time did we do it last year, seven?
Five thirty.
Yeah, I thought it was earlier, uh, when's the book fair, is the book fair like?
It starts at eight in the morning and goes, and so what I, what I'll make sure of, because we were gonna make sure that the book fair organizers had an evening planned for the tenth, that we can make sure they can do one for the twelfth too. Cause they don't usually, they don't have evening hours every night.
I see.
So.
I see.
But I was just making a note. Twelfth evening.
Well, I think in all honesty, six P M would probably be.
Would be better.
A lot better for us, so, let's go six P M on the twelfth.
And what time was the Williston Central?
Uh, three fifteen, I believe, Greg, is what you suggested.
Yes, three fifteen on the twelfth. And I wonder if, I wonder if you're gonna, you know, do it in the morning if a Tuesday's better than a Monday. In terms of turnout for A B S, I don't know.
Oh, totally, uh, it doesn't, at this point, it doesn't matter, if you think Tuesday's better, I'm good with that.
I think you made a good, you might get a couple more customers, cause then we can remind them on Monday and.
Alright. Tuesday the tenth it is.
So, what was it, seven, seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen. So one last time, Tuesday the tenth, seven fifteen for A B S, Thursday the twelfth, three fifteen for W C S and six P M for the public forum. Okay?
And how long do, like, how long do the teacher ones, the staff ones?
An hour would be more than enough. People are gonna come in and, and we usually set up whiteboards and, and have a couple leading kinda questions, you know, what, what would you like to see? What would you like to not see?
They get bagels and fruit, they write their comments down.
Well, no, I'm just thinking the Allenbrook one, yeah, what time does the day start, cause it just.
Yeah, teachers leave the meeting room at seven fifty or so, so that would be a shortened.
Short one for them, okay.
And there was great attendance, you know, they, they.
And some good ideas.
Yeah, and that's, and we got good ideas.
So is that one usually in the cafeteria or?
Uh, we usually do it in the conference room, uh, in the office, by John's office.
Oh, okay.
And we let a spread, people come in, grab a cup of coffee, talk to us, I write stuff down on the whiteboard.
And then they go and.
Yeah, two minutes of conversation.
So the board remains for, uh, food?
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Uh, we, we'll ask you guys to provide ca- uh, coffee, like, at off the cafeteria.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Okay, alright, so, can I have a motion? To set the public forum dates for, uh, budget input for, uh, Tuesday the tenth at Allenbrook School at seven fifteen A M, Thursday the twelfth at three fifteen W C S and at six P M at W C S for the public portion of the input.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Forum dates have been set. Okay, we have seven dot seven, we have a leave of absence request.
I think we should do that in executive session.
Alright, I'll take seven dot seven and move it into executive session for personnel. So we'll get to that at the end here, we're moving right along. Uh, seven dot eight, uh, I believe that there's a note in here to approve the, uh, is that the final costs, uh, with all of the engineering, uh, firms and everything for the facilities committee?
The two X Collins plus the civil and mechanical and electrical engineering.
Do you have that number written for me, was it thirty eight something?
Thirty two, eight, seven, five.
Alright.
So moved.
So can I have, yeah, so there we go, so can I have a motion to approve the architecture and engineering support costs for the facility committee at, at thirty two?
Eight, seven, five.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. So, just so you know, that we, we, under summer action, I approved the engineering proportion of that, which was like twenty one thousand.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, see?
That's why I was confused, cause I thought some of this was. That's why I was confused, 'cause I thought some of this was already approved.
So what happens is, is, is that, in order to, for a couple reasons, we broke it apart. There's a little bit more of an overhead to have the firm manage that for us. Lyle has an ongoing relationship with all of these teams already doing, doing work, so we went and bid them separate and brought them together, and so the total cost is that number, but we haven't approved that, that number over the sixteen thousand that's already been done.
Okay.
Okay? Any other discussion or questions?
And this number was part of our budget, or is this a budget adjustment at the end of the day?
It's contained in construction fund. Project.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Great, hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we pulled seven dot nine out for affirming the summer action by the board chair. Uh, let me just, let me just do this, and then we can get into the sessions of specifics. So can I have a motion to approve the summer actions of the board chair for?
No, that's what we're pulling out, that's what I asked to pull out.
I know, so now I'm, in order to get a discussion, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna ask you for a motion to affirm, and then.
Yes, move to affirm, and then move to discuss in executive session, 'cause they're all personnel issues.
Okay, then we'll take seven dot nine and put that in as a ten dot two. So ten dot one is our leave of absence, and ten dot two was seven dot nine. Okay. So that brings us to the consent agenda, which is eight dot O. We pulled out eight dot four, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with eight dot four pulled?
So who's our, who's our clerk?
Uh, Javana.
I'm the back, I'm the assistant clerk.
Did you verify the? I mean, I mean, my, my concern is, we've, we've got, we're approving expenditures of almost three million, and we don't have our clerk here. I'm not trying to.
I didn't go anywhere to verify this, I didn't know, yeah.
No, we don't have that here. Uh, we wouldn't have it here, it would be, you know, it would be down in the details, it would be the, the, the two bi-weeklies.
Okay, and she hasn't expressed any?
And you're also approving the last ones, not the, not the ones she's missed.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Great. Any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Did I push that one through too fast? Okay. Confirm next meeting dates, so we have our, so we've got, actually, we've got a few to add to this, but you're aware of them in the action items. So we have, but, but they're not until November. So board meeting October twentieth, CSSU board also October twentieth, and there's the board chairs meeting, which is October sixth at eight AM. Great, so, at this point, we'll enter executive session. I anticipate we will come out of executive session, and we'll have a couple motions to pass. All right, guys, can I have a motion to take us out of executive session?
Still moved.
Still moved.
I'll, I'll take that as a motion, and a second?
Yeah, although I'm not.
I think that's all we need, right?
Now we need to have a motion to accept the.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I know, that's why, just to get us out of executive session. Yeah, so now we need a motion to accept the leave of absence request.
I'll make a motion to accept the leave of absence request.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then, can I have a motion to affirm the summer action by the board chair?
Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a move to adjourn? We are adjourned.